I'd like to call to order the Amberly Village Council Meeting of August 12, 2019. Please call the rule.
Richard Bardak.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Larmer.
Here.
Kevin McDonough.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Here. If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, suit of flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The first item on our agenda this evening are minutes from first our regularly scheduled meeting of July 8th. Those minutes were circulated in our package. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, we can consider those minutes approved. The other minutes we have in the package are is from the council work session of June 24th. There was one correction that was circulated to council members earlier today. Are there any other correct?
Yes, I just have one correction. I'm sorry for bringing this up at this time. This is related to my comments, so we could add the following sentence at the end of that paragraph. He requested obtaining real estate tax data from private swim clubs in the county.
Okay. Do you have that? Any other? So, could you make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So, make a motion to approve the minutes from the council work session of June 24th as amended.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the council minutes from the work session of June 24th. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It noted that that test is unanimous. The next item on our agenda is our finance report from June 2019. The agenda says 2018, but it is 2019.
Including your packet is the finance information for June 2019. Just a brief summary of what was accomplished this past month for the month of June. The earnings tax revenue totaled a little over $6262,000. This is up about a little over 5% from last year's collection in the month of June, which was $249,000, so we are seeing an increase. And one thing that the Finance Committee did at their most recent meeting is they always do a look back on a quarterly basis of earnings tax. So I included some of that information in your council packet. I just want to point that out to you, that the second quarter tax collections repeated the 26% increase over 2018, so that was from looking at a quarter on a quarter basis. For this particular quarter, the second quarter, the largest increase in revenue was for individual returns. So when we look at, we put the tax returns in buckets, so there are three categories, and that's what the Finance Department looks at. There is the resident or the individuals. The second category would be doing business in the village or business itself. The third category being withholding would capture any withholding that's occurring within the village by a business or individuals themselves. We also have a category for net profit. So that net profit is doing business in the village or businesses that are actually in the village. And so that's what comprises our buckets for the earnings tax. So the largest increase for the quarter that we just completed was in the, on the individual return. So that was, that's a good sign for us. So that was an increase of $243,000 over what we collected in 2018. Now keep in mind, 2018 was not our best year at all. In fact, it was one of our lowest years. Probably goes back to about the last nine years. It would have been one of the lowest years for the village to collect. But the earnings tax is doing well in 2019, and there are reasons for different fluctuations as we've talked before. We try not to hone in on any particular month or particular quarter because it does fluctuate, and so there are caveats to earnings tax collections. I do want to point that out, that as of this year, as of the end of June, we've collected $1.8 million in earnings tax. Our estimate for the year is $2,750,000, so we're well on our way to collecting what we had estimated. So going back to the other revenue sources, we did not receive any property tax. We've already received that so far this year. There'll be additional money coming in later this year on the local government fund. We collected a little over $5,800 that came through the state of Ohio. So in total, for the month of June, we collected $316,000, and that adds to our total collection as of the end of June of $2.9 million, and that's about almost a 60% collection rate as of the end of June. On the expense side for the general fund, the month of June, we spent $326,000 for a year-to-date amount of $2,433,000. Our budget for 2019 in the general fund is $5.2 million, so as of the end of June, we have expended 45% of our budget. And that leaves us with a unencumbered general fund balance of just a little less than $5.5 million at the end of June. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for me?
Scott, would it be, would it be helpful to try and obtain some data on, let's say, employment numbers? That is, are there more people working in the village, things like that? As of your analysis, you know, would that be another?
The best, the best gauge is through our tax administrator. She gives, she attended the meeting, gave us a sense as to what's going on, and we talked about this in the first quarter. What we believe is occurring is that some of the folks that are moving into the village are wage earners, and that's helping our situation. Some of our folks who may not pay taxes may be moving out of the village or something else, and so what we're seeing is an influx of some folks moving in that are wage earners, and that is helping. So I think from a general standpoint, I think that's probably what's driving it. And the economy is doing well, unemployment is extremely low, so we don't have those issues that are factors here.
Thank you. And I have one question related. You brought up the local government fund. The spreadsheet that I think came out last week supposedly helped us identify how much the village would be getting next year. I couldn't figure it out. Have you looked at the spreadsheet?
On the local government fund?
How much we would, now that the state has agreed to increase it some. There was a spreadsheet that came out from Hampton County.
Yeah.
I thought, I did not see that, but I thought that was on the gas tax.
No.
It was not? Okay, I'll go back and look at that. I did not see that, I'm sorry. Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Forward to chiefs.
Thank you. Your Honor, or, Your Honor, I'm going to read you a testimony here, sorry. Today, we have a kind of neat celebration where we recognize an employee from Topics for her, you know, quick thinking and notifying the police department. Before I come down, I just want to give a brief overview of what actually happened. Some of you may have seen on Nextdoor the last weekend, July, where we were having some car break-ins in the area of Farm Acres and things like that. On July 31st, just before 2:00, our officers dispatched the Topics at 2121 Section for a suspicious subject walking through the parking lot. Ms. Payton was actually on break at the time and noticed a subject walking through. There was a number of other employees that were in a parking lot that also seen the subject, but they did nothing about it. At that point, she notified her supervisor of the subject being out there. She actually seen him going up, car handles, actually looking in the windows of the car. She notified our department right away, and when we responded, I was the first responding officer in an unmarked vehicle. We had other vehicles parked on the street. As I entered the lot, I could see the subject had just crossed over the tracks and was going through the next business lot. We sent the marked units over there, and I went in and met with Ms. Payton and them, and we checked the vehicles. Fortunately, there was no vehicles actually broken into at that time in the lot, but when the officers actually made contact with the subject, he actually had outstanding warrants from another jurisdiction. Also, when they were going through his property, we did find the stolen credit cards and some other items from our residents here in Amberly that occurred that night. That actually led to a further investigation. We found out he had multiple sets of car keys that people had left in their cars that he was taking. We have linked it back to one stolen vehicle that occurred in Golf Manor, as well as there's a couple other ones that were out there waiting for other callbacks from other jurisdictions. We, when he was taken into custody, he had a hypodermic needle with some kind of residue in it, a crack pipe, and he had some powder cocaine hidden down in his sock. This subject was not new to crime. He had multiple cases for drugs and other things and stealing. But, you know, tonight, we want to bring Mrs. Payton here and give her a word just to say thanks because her willingness to be that person to pick up the phone and call has not only helped our department, but it helped a lot of other departments throughout Hamilton County closing out cases. We always get calls two and three days later that we've seen somebody and we thought the guy looked suspicious. You know, there are ways for us to approach people and just make contact with them, and if there's nothing wrong with, they're on their way. But this was a situation where, you know, you assisted us getting, somebody has been in prison before that was on probation that's going back to prison now as a result of you taking the time to make the phone call. So I just ask you to come forward here for a second. So this, on this award, it just says Citizen Award of Excellence presented to Beverly Payton on behalf of the Amberly Village Police Department, and as well as my gold coin on there is the award of commendation, just to say thanks to her. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks. Want to fix that with you? Okay. Want to say anything? You want to talk? Yeah. You want to say something? You can.
Well, I would like to say thank you for giving me this award, even though I didn't expect anything. I just feel like it's up to us to help you all.
Thank you.
You know, help us, so, thank you.
You're deserving of that. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
On behalf of all of the residents of Amberly Village, thank you very much. And you do not, I was going to say, you don't need to stay for the rest of the council meeting. You're welcome to it.
Thank you.
But thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, and Mr. Lazarus.
My name is Bruce Lazarus. I live at 3140 North White Tree Circle. I'm an Amberly resident for over 20 years. While the entire council has heard from me on several occasions, the current contact form on the webpage is not sufficient. 1,000 characters, which includes spaces, simply is not enough space to write you on some issues. Additionally, on the website, under Council Contact page, you have your phone numbers listed. I am asking that you modify that listing to include a direct email address. I am sure you are all too busy to want to talk to me on the phone, plus I really don't want to have to call each one of you individually to discuss whatever issue I am concerned with. Please add your email and change the contact form to make it at least 2,000 characters. The main reason I am here today is to talk to you about how the council is elected. I wrote all of you, but I want to make a public statement and have the council respond to my concerns. I have no interest in running for council. Get that out there. We're too late to make fundamental changes to how we vote for this coming election, but we need to start somewhere. We live in a representative democracy. Under the village charter, there are five council members, one from each of our five districts, plus two at-large members. In voting, the entire village votes for each of the district's members. People who don't live in my district are voting for my district rep, just as I can vote on theirs. This is worse than gerrymandering. At least with gerrymandering, the people voting are voting for their representatives. Here, outsiders, people outside the district, are voting for a district's representative. Probably when our village developed the governance plan, this was put into place so there would be a rep from each area, ensuring all of Amberly is covered. While a nice idea, but in today's world, we need our reps to represent us, not of other people. We do have at-large council members whose purpose is to serve the greater village. Our district reps should be answerable directly to their constituents, i.e. the district residents of their district. I do foresee that there may be some possible situations or elections where a residence of one district may want a different approach taken than the rest of the village. This is where having a district rep that answers to their district and only their district comes in. There's also the practical aspect of running for elections. A candidate for a district only needs to campaign within the district, not village-wide. Keep in mind, there are two at-large representatives. If the way we are currently set up apply to our state or federal elections, it would be like letting people in Cleveland vote for who our state or federal reps would be. I would be happy to discuss this in further detail, but I only have three minutes. I've already spoken about 3,000 characters, including spaces and punctuation. We need to change our city charter. I'm requesting that the council discuss this and start to take appropriate action to move forward. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council?
Thanks, Bruce. You've actually given me a lot to think about, and I have been thinking about it, but I'm not going to comment on your primary concern. I do want to reiterate, however, I have brought up to the administration and to council that there needs to be a way for residents to contact all council members at the same time, be it on the website, by the form, or through our individual emails, but, I mean, you shouldn't have to copy and paste a letter to your council seven times in order to get the attention of everybody. And I do have thoughts on the other, but I'm not going to go into that right now. Thank you.
To follow up on Natalie's comments regarding the website, there was a point in time in the past where all of our emails were listed together, and we did get group emails from residents, and it was very confusing as to who was going to reply, and there was the reply all aspect of it, and it just, it was found to be cumbersome. I did not know there was a limit of characters, however. I am concerned about that.
And may I add, to write to Scott, you're limited to 500 characters, which is even tough, so, not that I have to write him a lot. He, I just call and he answers.
As far as the election aspect, I would be curious to know if, and I said this to you in the email that I replied to you, have you felt unrepresented? Because the reality is, I mean, my perception of my, I have been a district rep and an at-large rep, but the reality is, we all campaign in the whole village. We all are accountable to all the voters since they all vote for us.
In my 20 years of living in Amberly, there have been, there haven't been many issues that are very contentious. Amberly Green is probably our prime battleground on many things, and when, and you know me because I keep sho, I'm the new Anthony Lane. I keep showing up. I keep.
Albert, Albert Lane, may his memory be for a blessing.
I keep showing up at all your meetings and committee meetings, and we have some questions that are going to come up about, do we have pathways and who wants access? And within a district, one particular district may not want that pathway, and when you have people outside the district voting for that district rep, then the question is, who are they answerable to? And then there's also the political aspect. We have, we rarely have real elections in terms of people running against one another. Some years, we do. It's kind of an unfair advantage to have people from outside that district voting for that particular rep. And as I said, it's like imagining if we did this with our state or federal representatives. Even though people in Cleveland are voting for our reps going to our state legislature, it's like people from Amberly A. voting on who's going to represent Amberly E. on council. We have four, five districts. We have five district reps. They should be elected by their district and their district only. And, you know, the idea, oh, they're, we're going to serve the greater good, well, of course, you're going to want to have a rep that's going to serve the greater good, but I want a rep who's going to put my district as first and then look at the, because that's why we have reps, to represent our interest on council. And I'm not trying to say that you don't do that, but it's rough. It's a little fuzzy, and it should be very clear-cut. You vote, you know, you are, Ed's my rep. He should be answerable to me, not answering to people in other districts.
I guess what I would counter quickly is, we're all answerable to you, is how I understand the system.
But, but, what is, you know, we have, and we also have some districts that may have different interests in what they think is best for their district or for them, for their small thing, and this is where we need to allow that representation. Because right now, we have, you know, no taxation without representation. Well, we have representatives who aren't, who are being voted in by other districts.
Can I, can, just one comment. I mean, I think we can refer this to a law committee, and it's coming up, to see if there's an appetite, but the one thing I would say is, the reason we have this is not for district. It is to prevent the situation that you have in many other communities. When you look at the listing of people on the ballot, you will find in situations where you have four people on the same street on council. And so, many say that Amberly Village is best practice in ensuring that you have representation across the village as opposed to one location, but I do think this is something that the law committee can take up and determine whether this is something we want to look at as far as, and this is the type of thing that you would primarily do, especially if there's other items of the charter that you want to open up.
And I do agree. I mean, that is, the nice thing is, we're guaranteed to have reps from each area, but since we're doing that, why don't we go completely in that manner and say, District A votes for District D?
Okay.
There's one comment. Bruce, thanks so much for coming here. I've always thought that our system was a little bit unusual, and I'd just like to add something. One of the downsides with our current system is that it actually, I think, serves as a deterrent from having people run for office. So for example, if you're in a certain district, to your point, you really need to get votes from the entire village as opposed to focusing on your district. And so, in that regard, I do believe it's a deterrent for having people engaged in running for office. So I thank you for being here and.
But one point to that is that, in terms of the realistic, realistic aspect of campaigning for the village council, if you only have to campaign within your district, your district's people will know you better, that you don't have to stretch out, and you know what's going on within your district. And I keep going back to, we do have the two at-large members, so this is, which is good, but I'm saying, let's look, let's look at it. I'm not expecting an answer, but I would like the council to move it forward, to look at, have the law committee look at it, look, I don't know if we have a governance committee, but look at this in further detail.
Okay. So we'll refer that to the law committee, and I know the village manager is looking at the, what we can do with respect to eGov and the possibility of possibly even going to council members having a Amberly Village email or whatever, but we will look at what we should be doing in that area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have one other resident to address. Dr. Brown?
My name is Dr. Ronald Brown. I'm at 6655 West Beachlands. Members of council, chief. I have to preface my remarks by first saying that I have been a resident of Amberly for a long, long time. I'm not going to tell you how many years, but a long time. I'm currently a snowbird, so I haven't been able to make this meeting as I had planned on doing, and I found out about it this morning, and he was gracious enough to allow me to speak to you. I have two, two issues to address tonight. The first one, which I felt was important to acknowledge, a very successful outcome. That would be the way the repavement of the weather and structural breakdown occurring on both Ridge and Section Road, especially outside here. The way both of these areas were fixed was exceedingly well-done. The reason, in my opinion, was the emphasis of a solid foundation before the final layer of asphalt was placed, and I would suggest if and when Section Road is repaved, and I don't know what your budget is and what's going to happen there, but the manner in which these two repairs were done, this could be the standard for that major repair. A solid foundation is always a better solution and would give many more serviceable years of life to that road, even though it may take a few more dollars, but I think in the long run, basically, all of us would appreciate and get the benefits of that spent money. The second issue I need for this council to be aware of and take a preventative action is the dangerous intersection of Beachlands and Section Road. When traveling west on Section, as one approaches to turn left onto Beachlands and approaching automobile in the opposite direction is completely hidden from view, there is a deep dip before this intersection, which will only in time cause serious injury and possible death to passengers in both automobiles. This is due to timing and speed, and as we all know, not everyone observes the 25 mile an hour speed limit. It varies, as the chief well knows, a lot more than that sometimes. It's only a matter of time before someone's going to be at the wrong place at the wrong time. There is a relatively easy and inexpensive solution to this potential disaster. That is, would be to place a convex mirror on a, conveniently on a telephone pole, which is an exact position to allow anyone approaching that intersection to eliminate this blind problem currently existing. Because I only found out about this meeting this morning, I am not prepared to offer video and graphs to accurately demonstrate this problem, and I wanted to make you aware of it, and I urge the council to investigate this and hopefully solve this to avoid a disastrous outcome. It should not take a lot of money to put a, to put a convex mirror on a telephone pole. You have other devices, as the chief knows, in other areas of our village, which indicate speed and so on. A convex mirror, and I don't know what the cost is, but it can't run any more than $500, $1,000 at the absolute most, but you're going to prevent a terrible accident there that is, and only in time is going to occur, and I like to be penny wise and pound foolish, you know, in a way. We need to spend the time and effort to make this something a lot more safer than it actually is now. I'm open for questions if I can answer any.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay. We have a streets committee coming up. Can we put that on the agenda, put the streets committee into...
The time for this is, I've already got those slots filled, so we could do another streets committee, but I'm, I'm short on time.
Or is this something the village engineer should look at? Or before, I mean, what's the committee going to do, but talk about it?
I know the issue of the mirrors, that there's issues with that. I know that there was once a mirror up at, on Ridge and Fair Oaks. And there's an issue with mirrors, right?
Yeah. It, it's not an acceptable form of traffic deterrent for the Ohio Uniform Traffic Manual. We have some information on this because we've looked at this intersection in the past.
So we'll schedule a future streets committee and we'll...
Okay.
All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening to my statement.
Okay. Well, now move on to the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, we received a grant from FEMA, which we made a certain appropriation for. However, we received an additional $1,924 from the FEMA grant, which requires us to quarterly spend the money pursuant to the grant. Quarterly, I want to introduce ordinance number 2019-8. Ordinance amending appropriations for the federal grant for 2019, the amount of $1,924.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-8, amending our appropriations for the federal grant. Are there any questions or comments? Not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance 2019-8. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock? Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Blue's my report.
Okay. We'll now move on to the streets, public utilities, and sewers committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Streets committee met on July 30th, and we covered several topics, some of which I'll review related to these, to these resolutions. First one relates to a bridge inspection contract. The state of Ohio took over the inspection of the village's bridge inspections in 2014 and subcontracted the work. ODOT manages and funds this program. There's no cost to the village. The bridges that ODOT annually inspects are on Beachlands Drive, south of Section Road, Fair Oaks Drive, south of Section Road, and Elbrook Avenue, north of Section Road. There are two additional bridge structures that are inspected by Hamilton County, by the Hamilton County Engineers Office. That's not part of this resolution. Those bridges are Section Road east of Kincaid and Section Road about 350 feet west of Fair Oaks Drive. So what this resolution does is enables ODOT to inspect our bridges. We need to give them permission. And so, before you is Resolution 2019-20, which authorizes the Ohio Department of Transportation to inspect the village bridges, these three village bridges, on an annual basis. So moved.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-20, authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation to inspect bridges. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-20. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Second item to discuss is our fire hydrant painting program. You may recall that this work started last year, and about half the village hydrants were stripped, which was also related stripped, being stripped of painting, of their previous painting. And that was done with a purchase of a, we call a plug hug, which is, I think, I, I refer to as a fancy spark plug washer, spark plug cleaner, right? And then the hydrants are repainted. So we have about 275 hydrants remaining that need to be stripped and painted, and the project, the cost for that will be $10,175. So, for you is Resolution 2019-21, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Ellis Painting for the painting of the fire hydrants. So moved.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-21, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract related to our fire hydrant painting program. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-21. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And just one other item that council's not going to be acting on, but just as an update for village residents. As you recall, the storm order program this year included some work done, work to be done on Fair Oaks Drive, south of Section Road, and Farm Acres Drive. Those bids were opened in the last, in the last few days, and we'll probably have some discussions related to that at our next streets committee meeting. But I just wanted to let residents know that those, those activities will be moving forward likely in the fall. Thank you. And that's the streets committee report.
Okay. We'll now move on to the village manager's report.
I have a few items I'd like to just bring to council's attention tonight. The resurfacing program will begin later this month. We're anticipating that the repaving of Arbor Crest Drive, Arbor Crest Court, Long Meadow Lane, north and south White Tree Circle, as well as Lamarck between Long Meadow Lane and north White Tree Circle, will begin the week of August the 26th. We, we will release information to the residents when we have, when we get closer to that date and have information about the, the beginning of the work. Typically, when we can, when resurfacing begins, there's curve work that occurs first. There's some work occurs out into the street, and then the actual resurfacing happens. But this was a contract that council awarded at your June meeting, a little over $700,000 worth of work to be done. So it's a pretty significant program by, by the village. The next item I wanted to talk about was the city hall selfie day. I mentioned that in the, in the manager's report. And this is all about having fun, and it's all about having, showing pride in your local government. So each of you were given a chief on the stick. Okay. We have, everybody, okay, we've got all the chiefs on the stick up. So this year, for city hall selfie day, Tammy came up with the idea to take advantage of our local celebrity, which is Chief Wallace. He's the closest that we have, and we, we certainly, he's near and dear to our heart. And I think what we're trying to accomplish is not only have fun, but also to promote what we have accomplished here in, in the village. And who better to do that than, than Chief Wallace, who has been recognized this year with several awards? And we all know him, and he certainly has been acknowledged and recognized outside of Amberly Village. And so we just want to take advantage of having the chief on a stick here, and would encourage you to take a picture with this, and encourage anybody to take pictures with the chief on the stick, and then post that to Facebook or Twitter or the village, Amberly Village account. And it is listed on the back, listed on the back here where you can post that. And this will be on Thursday, August 15th, this Thursday. So we just encourage you to put your smiling face with the chief on a stick and, and post that. So, great opportunity to have some fun and to show our local government love. The next item I wanted to mention is in regards to the work that's been done in the city of Redding. You know that they have built a new school in Redding. That school will start after Labor Day, and we anticipate there'll be some traffic inconveniences as a result of that. I've communicated with the city of Redding about the changes that they're planning and what is going on. As you know, there've been work that's been occurring there for the last quite a few weeks. They do anticipate that work to be completed by, before, before Labor Day. But one, the part of the information I shared in the council packet, we will make that available to residents, so they can anticipate that and be prepared for that, because it will cause some, some inconveniences. The starting times for Redding Community City Schools is staggered, so it should help a little bit, but we'll be just being, paying attention to that particular area so, to minimize the impact to the, to the village. My final item consists of the remaining items on the agenda as it goes for ordinances. So the next three ordinances on the agenda are, all they are, renumbering ordinances. So when these were put on the agenda for the March 2019 meeting, we did not take into consideration that three ordinances had previously been approved by council in January. So it was just a renumbering issue. The best way to correct that issue after consulting with, with the law director is just assigning them new numbers, so we have transparency here and that we can communicate what happened, and so that we can track our ordinances appropriately. So the best thing to do is just assign them the three, the next three numbers. So those next three numbers would be ordinance 2019-5, 2019-6, and 2019-7. Nothing is different about this. All three of these ordinances were, were approved unanimously, but you do need to go through the process of a motion, a second, waiving any readings, and an emergency clause, because they're after the fact and we want to put them into effect immediately. So apologize for the error, but we'd like to get that taken care of this evening. So the first one on your agenda concerns the, or the 2019-5 concerns the, the compensation issue. So I would refer that to...
As we go through these, as we go through these, Councilwoman K. Mine is going to handle the first one, she's the chair of that committee. Second one is law related, so Councilman Barash could handle that, and then Councilman Hattenbach can handle the third one, that's that financial.
Thank you. So the first thing, this is the ordinance, this is the ordinance amending the ordinance that fixed compensation for village employees that was passed on March 11th, that came originally from the Compensation and Benefits Committee. So I'd like to move that we first waive the three readings for ordinance 2019-5.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2019-5. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three, three readings on ordinance 2019-5. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. And now I'd like to move that we approve ordinance 2019-5.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2019-5, which, which amends the number of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-5. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Great. And now finally, I would like to move that we declare, that we declare ordinance 2019-5 for emergency. Yeah. So moved.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we declare ordinance 2019-5 as an emergency measure to allow it to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-5 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock? Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Ordnance number 2019-6 amends the ordinance number 2019-2, amending and approving a proposal to amend the compensation of, of the solicitor that was passed on March 11, 2019. Ordnance number 2019-2 amended and approved a proposal to amend compensation of the solicitor that was passed on March 11 of 2019, where due to an oversight, it was assigned ordinance number 2019-2, which number had been previously used on an ordinance passed on January 14, 2009. Whereas in order to correct the number, numbering oversight, council desires to amend the above referenced ordinance 2019-2 that was passed on March 11, 2019 in number only. Wherefore, it is requested to amend ordinance number 2019-2, amending and approving the proposal to amend compensation of solicitor and renumber that to ordinance number 2019-6.
So you first want to move that we waive three readings?
Move that we waive the three readings on ordinance number 2019-6.
Second? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2019-6. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive three readings on ordinance 2019-6. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-6.
Second? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2019-6. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-6. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I make a motion to declare an emergency to ratify ordinance number 2019-6.
Second? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-6 as an emergency measure which will allow it to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-6 as emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I want to introduce ordinance number 2019-7. The ordinance for amending ordinance number 2019-3, amending appropriations for the fiscal year of 2019 and declaring emergency. Quarterly, firstly, I move that we waive three readings of ordinance 2019-7.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we, that we waive three readings on ordinance 2019-7. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt, I'm sorry, that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2019-7. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I move that the ordinance number 2019-7 be added an emergency measure.
Adopt it.
Approved. Approved.
And we approve 2000, just do that? Okay. I'm sorry. We did the, I'm sorry. We approve 2019-7, changing the ordinance number 2019-3, 2019-7.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-7. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-7. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Now for the emergency measure, I move that we adopt this, ordinance 2019-7 as an emergency measure.
Second?
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-7 as an emergency measure which will allow it to go into immediate... measure which will allow it to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt ordinance 2019-7 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak? Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, and that concludes the manager's report?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay, and now move on to the chief's report.
I just have two items. The first item we'll talk about is the fire we had on August 8th on Long Meadow. I know previously, everyone knows that that property, most people know the property was vacant there, and it's been going through some remodeling, and the manager has actually ordered the grass and everything to be cut recently before the fire, which was probably about a week or two before. The property, the, the fire itself is still under investigation to the cause and origin. We brought in the county arson team with Brandon Gearing's on that team now, and brought them in. It's not that we suspect arson at this point, but we just feel like we need to do our due diligence. We did have a fire at that same residence, probably about a month prior, in the garage as a result of some oily rags in the cans, but they're doing a lot of work at the residence, which could have been an accidental fire. But just to cover all bases, when the officers pulled up, it was a pretty good working fire, heavy smoke and flames that were already showing through the roof. All the responding crews, we had probably five or six different departments there because it was getting hot pretty quick, and with the temp, the regular temperature outside, guys wouldn't want anybody overheating. But by making some trench cuts in the roof, we actually made a quick stop to the fire and kept it from extending into the bi-level part of the house, which is a positive aspect. I know there's a lot of rumors going around, that's I kind of want to touch it, because they seen people wearing investigator shirts, and we're not suspecting anything at this point, we're just, it's still under investigation, still, you know, needs to be determined. Was there any question on that? Next thing, if you guys could hold us faces up again, because my family's not going to believe you guys really did that. I told my wife how special I am, and she never believes it. I was afraid to get the writ, and I didn't know what he was going to be going with it. See, now I can tell her, I'll tell her. That's in my report. Number two is just to see my face. I'm done.
With respect to the mayor's report, the first thing I wanted to mention was the upcoming Ice Cream Social, which will be a week from this coming Sunday. The hours, two to six, two to five?
Two to five.
Two to five. Again, this year, Amberly Village staff are working very hard to make it a fun event for all residents, and I'm sure they will do a great job as they did last year, to make it a great event, so please plan on attending if you can. The next thing I wanted to mention, the Environmental Spiritship Committee does not meet this month, next meeting is September 23rd at 7:00. And the, the Environmental Spiritship Committee with respect to recycling, along with Rumpke and the county and so forth, is really going to try over the next year to focus our efforts, not only on, you know, our ongoing efforts to try to increase our quantities, but we're very much going to try to focus on the quality, and that will be covered at the Ice Cream Social. We are going to be looking at the Ice Cream Social for some volunteers that might serve in a focus group that really help identify how we can make a difference on this. The Environmental Spiritship Committee rightfully concluded that us coming up with the right answers of how best to communicate this, et cetera, is not a very good thing, since, you know, those people, you know, are talking the same language, and we want to really try to identify how we make a difference. So hopefully we'll find some people that will help us out with it.
Will you talk about compost too?
Yeah.
That's a question I have, recycling, the right things in the bin, you mean, or?
What the county is, the county is very much focusing the same type of thing. The county for the last, say, eight, 10 years, they're focused, their program is to increase the quantity. But what they've concluded, and so many times, you know, like Amberly Village and so forth, we weren't really focused, they were focusing on communities where rates were relatively low, to try to get their rates up. But primarily, you know, because of the economics of recycling right now, they're concluding that they're better off getting much better at this thing, because one of the problems is that they're, in many places, they're having to just throw out recycling because of all the waste and all the mixing. So if they can get much better, so the program is going to focus equally on communities that are doing very well, try to get the communities to do better. And in fact, there's a program being run by the state that I know in, started in Cleveland, where they were going out and doing audits of individual bins, that they will, will do the bin, dump the bin into something, and you might, and you know, somebody might get a report card on their bin of how well they've done. So we wanted to start, start trying to do the same.
There was something on WVXU today to that point, and I think that's going to be happening locally, that is, you know, looking at people's bins.
Okay, with that, that concludes my mayor's report. I know there's a couple items and new business, and I, first, Councilwoman Conway, I know you have.
Okay, just two things from my role as the, on the LSDMC at PRM, since I'm public schools related. Last Friday, I attended Superintendent Laura Mitchell's opening of school address at the Centus Center, at which she and various board members announced the kind of rollout of their three-year plan, focusing on five key areas, including student center decision-making, health and safety, community engagement, improved systems and data, and growth. I mean, they want to expand and open more schools. I think, I'm, I'm a fan of Laura Mitchell's, I think she's very inspiring, she has a vision and has really got, got the plans, the practicality to accomplish it. So I would encourage you to look it up on the CPS website if you have any interest. Tonight, I attend, before this meeting, I attended the open house at Pleasant Ridge Montessori, school starts next week. I was very well attended. The new principal is acting to put her own stamp on the school already, and three or four events were consolidated into one, and so it was, it was very, very jammed up and very, very strong energy there. I will be inviting her to visit with us at some point when she gets more settled. So that completes my report.
And I know Vice Mayor Wolf has-
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to announce that the Human Rights Commission is going to be meeting August 15th at 5:00 PM, I believe that is Thursday. And on August 14th, which is Wednesday, at 6:00 PM, we will have yoga on the lawn, which is right next to the tennis courts. I went to the first yoga on the lawn, and there were 36 people there, it was very well attended, it was really, really beautiful. To the manager, I did read your report, and I noticed that there were swarming june bugs down there, and just want to assure our residents that I assume the june bug infestation is gone, because that was kind of a terrifying thing to read about, right where we'll be having yoga on the lawn. But it was really, really lovely, the weather couldn't have been more perfect. I think that I, we've really touched on something that people are interested in and want to go to. And then lastly, I want to give some thanks to Chief Wallace and the Amberly Fire Department, in addition to the accolades you are, and that you already get, but Adath Israel Congregation hosts clients of the Interfaith Hospitality Network three times a year, and Amberly Police is always great, and they know that we do this, but occasionally I ask a favor, and I asked this time if we could have a fire truck come and visit, because we have a lot of kids, we didn't have so many kids this year, but we had some. And the, the big ladder truck came, and the kids were talking about it the other night, about the ladder and getting to climb on the truck, and even though we only had two littles, they were very impressed and they liked it. So thank you. That, that's it?
Make note of the village, some of the folks in the village, residents in the village have had block parties recently. Farm Acres Drive had a block party a couple, I think it was about maybe two months ago. More recently, there was a block party on Brookwood, and so I just wanted to share that it's a great way to meet your neighbors, it's great for security on your street, but as I said, it's a great way to meet your neighbors, and so I certainly encourage all residents to try and organize something like that. We haven't had those kinds of events in our village for a long time, so it's really great that those things are happening. The second thing I wanted to, to note is, I know we often, and rightly so, we often thank our police, fire department, maintenance crew for all the work they do in our village, and, and there's no question about the, the great work that they do. I just wanted to just highlight, you know, the events that happened in Dayton a little over a week ago, where Police Department and first responders really prevented what could have been an horrific tragedy from occurring, to basically, you know, stop it in its tracks. So I just wanted to thank Police Department again, our Police Department, really the Police Departments just up the road from us, for the incredible work that they, that they do, and I'm sure we all, we all share that view.
Thanks, Ray. Okay, since we're all talking about police, just wanted to make sure everybody saw, I think it was posted on our website, but the chief was on, there was a, a story on WCPO that the chief was part of, about a book that was written by Alana Nadel, who you all met, she came to our meeting, she is an employee at the JCC, about actually helping kids in events, in, in responding to active shooter and other kind of events, and the chief was prominently featured in that story, it's worth checking out on WCPO, but it's also to, and to your point, if you, you know, know people who have children who are in those kind of environments, it's, it's a worthy, the material itself is worth checking out, and she is a friend of the village as well, the author of that book, Alana. I actually, on a different note, but JCC related, this Sunday is the Great Human Race, which is the 5K race that the JCC and the Holocaust and Humanity Center put on, that starts at the J and ends at the J and runs through the neighborhoods, kind of like all the neighborhoods you mentioned where the street paving is going to be happening, Arborcrest and Spring Valley and Long Meadow and White Tree and all of those, Lamarck, all of those areas. Hopefully, it would have been better if the street, you know, like if it was a freshly paved street for them, I guess, but they'll be, they'll be there. It starts at 8:00, and goes till 10:00, so obviously, registration's still open, you can register to run, but for those who maybe in the area, just be patient, I'm sure, with traffic and stuff for just a little bit of that, and, oh, you can register day of as well.
And I'm running, and Peg is running?
We'll have a, there's a water station at my house, so we'll see you at, you know.
And if the chief runs?
Oh, yes.
We can cheer. Go chief!
I'm good, thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, seeing that there's no other new business, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.